Do you need to plug in, because you're probably before me. I always forget that you don't plug into it?
Well.
Just unplug it?
No, I can just, if you punch that, it'll let me connect. I'll try to connect with the code.
Or you just want to hook my wire and plug it right into yours? I'm good with that. You gonna help me?
I don't care.
I'm not, I'm good, I'm good talking from here. So you're saying you think you can just like, if you go here, hit that icon?
And I'll bet you I can. Oh, same thing it did earlier?
Oh, I'm doing it like at one AM for a senior.
Last call for blue cards on any item on the honor of the agenda. Alright, we're gonna call to order this meeting for the Bath Little School District Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Roll call?
Mrs. Ernest?
Here.
Mrs. Callie?
Here.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Leidy?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
I stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we're gonna go on to recognition of students and staff.
This is probably my favorite part of the meeting, so I appreciate all you students, advisors, and coaches being with us here tonight. I'm probably gonna read right from my list, otherwise I'll get all mixed up and forget somebody. We're gonna start off with the student council and Lord Previs, their advisor, please come forward. Now you get to tell us who you are and what you're going to be doing.
So the student council is the bridge between student body and administration. Uh, we have four officers. I am president, Ezra McKissick, and we have four, um, class representatives, bridge classes. Do you want me to talk more? I can talk more. Uh, Nurse?
You just gotta designate the next person.
Um, we had an amazing homecoming again this year. I, we performed very well, um, record attendance again. Um, we also, some of our members attended, uh, a Justin's Renaissance Tour, I believe it's called. Uh, we just learned how to build school morale, engagement, and involvement, and we started implementing those things with, um, spirit days. We, we pass out candy on Halloween, and then we also have our Christmas baskets coming out. We go out and provide food for families in need. And then we also plan a Christmas day and do, um, a Kiki Kip, advisor.
So I am Lord Previs, I'm the advisor.
I'm the freshman representative.
Ezra McKissick, president.
Jaden Ryan, I'm just a senior.
Um, Ethan Cole, I'm the senior representative.
I'm Hale Hensley, I'm the vice president.
I'm Kyle Fallas, I'm the secretary.
I'm Leah Shields, I'm a senior.
Well, thank all of you for.
Thank you.
Our interact club and advisor, Mrs. McKissick.
Hi.
I can see some of you are gonna be up here.
Uh, I'm Slaya McKissick. I am the interact advisor. Um, interact is something that I've been doing, I think this is my third year. Um, it is a service-based club. Um, we like to, we are a extension from the Llama Rotary, um, so we work a lot with them. And then I'll let you, let someone like.
Um, I'm Hank O'Donnell, I'm the secretary. Uh, favorite event, um, Lama Shatoma, Hank KK, Lama Senior.
I'm Ezra McKissick, vice president. My favorite event is probably setting up, planning, and working the father-daughter dance.
Uh, I'm Hale Hensley, I'm the president. Um, my favorite event is the Ottawa River cleanup. Uh, that one's a lot of fun.
My name's Ethan Cole, I'm the treasurer. My favorite event is the flip the switch, which is actually coming out this Friday, so we're all looking forward to running that again this year.
Does anybody ever fall into the river?
Uh, I actually. It was, it was pretty close.
We stood in that. And we found a grocery cart. That was actually.
Yeah, oh, and I dug up a tire.
Yeah, it's actually a really fun event.
It's open to all the communities.
We learned a lot of things.
Feel free to join us.
Well, thank you for all your efforts of representing us very well. Thank you. Our boys' basketball team and Coach Dre White.
Alright, so Dre White, boys' basketball, uh, first year here as, um, head coach. It's, it's great to be back here, be back home as an alumni. So, really excited. I brought with me, uh, Maine Barcy Assistant beside me, and our three, our three leaders and our three seniors. Um, we look to soon, uh, a week from Friday, comes the tip-off for our first game, so we're very excited about it.
Tell us who you are.
I'm John Cook, as you said, I'm the barcy assistant basketball coach.
I'm Everett Benzman.
Uh, my name's Jackson Foster.
I'm Jaden Ryan.
And we're looking forward to an outstanding season. You know, it's, it's all about the effort. I think you can always be successful if you're giving it your best. You know, good luck.
Thank you.
National Honor Society, if this is elegant.
Hi, I'm Shaw Ellington. I teach at the high school and I'm the National Honor Society advisor. We have juniors and seniors in the National Honor Society, but I just brought my officers with me, and I'm gonna let them talk this time.
Um, I'm Haley Hinkle. I'm the vice president of National Honor Society. I'm just gonna go over what it takes to get into the society and to apply. So to apply to the society, you need to have a three point five cumulative GPA, and anyone with a three point five is invited to a meeting where applications are explained and handed out. On the application, it covers activities in and outside of school for the applicant in grades nine and ten. It also includes three essay questions over leadership, character, and service. The final requirement is a letter of recommendation from someone not associated with Bath Schools in any capacity, both employed or volunteer. After applications are turned in, an anonymous committee consisting of teachers from the high school makes selections based on the application and review of any disciplinary actions taken upon the applicant. Once you remember, you must maintain the cumulative GPA of three point five and remain in good standing with character and leadership.
I'm Leah Shields, I'm the secretary, and I'm gonna talk about what we do like throughout the year and what we do just in the fall. So we do the pledge and announcements. It's a different pair of people every quarter, and that's all voluntary. Um, we also do tutoring. Every member is required to sign up for two tutoring slots, which are available every period and during Wildcat times for every day. Um, in the fall, we do tapping, which is basically, the new members don't really know that they're members yet, so we kind of just walk into their fourth period and tap them and just leave, which is kind of funny to me. We do that in October, and then in November, we officially induct them as well as install the, the, uh, officers, that's what they're called, the officers of the society. And also in November, we have a cookie dough fundraiser to raise funds.
I'm Ethan Cole, I'm the president of National Honor Society. Um, I'm responsible for tonight, so I'm out in winter. Uh, so coming up here, we have the, uh, food, yeah, the three baskets, uh, Christmas, uh, food drive. We're kind of in it with a joint venture with student council. Uh, they're more responsible creating the food for the baskets. We're more responsible creating the gifts and stuff for the children. Uh, so usually fifteen dollars, uh, for a present for a child, or the child is between the ages of, or in high score, middle school, we'll get them a gift card. Um, and then in addition to that, the, um, each family get a, uh, twenty-five to fifty-dollar, uh, gift card to good food, so they can go have a good meal. Uh, that's contingent on the family's size. Uh, that's a really fun event. Uh, we were really successful with the years past. We've been, uh, pretty clean in our operations. And we just take the food baskets and they'll like carpool up and we'll just load them up, and, uh, everyone's really happy with it, and it's a great, um, opportunity to serve the community. And then moving forward in February to April, we have the blood drive. Uh, it's a real big event we have here at school. I know a lot of people, uh, donated blood through the school, and that's how they kind of got into it. I know Hale, uh, has really got into it after having done the, uh, blood drive. Um, we kind of break down into class when it comes to the responsibilities for that, so the juniors will, uh, set up and tear down, and then the seniors will be more responsible for running it, um, working the food, helping with the tables, um, yeah, except for.
Uh, I'm Hale Hensley, I am the puberflations officer. Um, so for spring, we, as the year slows down, we really only have one event that we do. It's the grandparents' breakfast, which is where we invite all of the National Honor Society and all the student council members, grandparents to come, and they set up their own little tables. That's a lot of fun to do. And then once we're there, we serve our grandparents' breakfast, we eat breakfast, uh, we listen to the choir sing, and then, um, we get our awards. So, uh, I think your first year, you get a patch, or you get a pen, or you get both, actually.
Are you part of National Honor Society?
Yeah.
Um, first year is a patch and the second year's a chevron, I think.
Okay.
I have a main habit, but that's not something I need to remember.
Okay, yeah, and then student council, we got a patch and a pen last year, so, yeah. Um, and then for summer, the rising seniors, so the incoming seniors, will be, uh, they'll go work the Wildcat Den for one session, and that's a lot of fun to do too. So, and it's a great way to raise funds for a club, so.
Well, and was student council the back-to-school event?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to tell them about that?
What?
Because that's kind of a big, big.
Student council is a school, but.
Hot dogs and haircuts.
Oh, oh my goodness, okay, yeah, so, yeah.
It's not on there?
No, it's not on here. Oh, yes, it is, sorry. My bad, that's my bad. Okay, yeah, the hot dogs and haircuts event, so that's an event that student council and the National Honor Society go hand-in-hand with. And, uh, so basically, we reach out to local hairstylists, and we reach out to local churches and local, um, I don't know, yeah, just local churches.
Or could it be DG's help us?
Yeah, yeah, we just, we get a lot of help from the community, so we provide free school supplies for students and families in need, and then also they're able to go get, um, a haircut as well. And in previous years, we've done a, we've given out hot dogs, but this previous year, we didn't, because we didn't want to step on toes with other organizations, so, yeah.
Well, thank you for your efforts on behalf of the community and the student council out here at school. Thank you very much. Cross country, Coach Brown.
When I moved this back to November, I was, had my fingers crossed because I didn't want to jinx everything, because, you know, standing in front of you is our three-time state qualifier, Jake Wyrmann. Ran a season best time in the state in nineteen eighteen. He's also one of our seniors. And also Penny, my closest to me, uh, was a one-time state qualifier, also our school record holder at eighteen forty-five about this season. So I didn't want to jinx it and just put the, you know, do this, but also in fact, we had meet, uh, meets at times that we were supposed to come, which wasn't very good. But we also had great seniors this year. We had a great season. Um, the boys' team went to Allen County, finished third in the WBL, fourth in the district. The girls' team, uh, finished fourth in the WBL and fourth in the district, qualifying for the first time in school district for regionals. Um, if you guys want to introduce yourselves real quick, I'll be great, and then we will, just a moment there.
Okay, um, I'm Penny Francis, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Kyle Fallas, I'm a senior.
Jake Arman, senior.
Ezra McKissick, senior.
Everett Benzman, senior.
Jaden Ryan, senior.
Hale Hensley, senior.
These guys are great. Um, I want to give a shout out also to, uh, Morgan, uh, who qualified for regionals as an individual, and, um, Landon Jones, who also qualified for regionals with a time of sixteen thirty, fourth fastest in school history. And then I also want to give a shout out, Everett was a qualifier for state last year, and then Ja, uh, Jaden, his last race this year, uh, made the under eighteen board, his last race in seventeen fifty-two. Something he would shoot for for probably four seasons, and he went with the bank. So I'm very proud of what they did. They represented our school well. And, uh, for the seniors, I know they're gonna go into great things and become great leaders in our, uh, community. And for Penny, we got three more years here with her. She's doing great things, not only in school, but, uh, athletics as well.
And, uh, I will tell you, I was impressed with the numbers that you had up here.
Thank you.
That's, sounds good, you know, something that, when you're trying to build a program, you want to see happen. Thank you, Joel. Okay, our, our quiz bowl.
Come on up, same people. So we've, uh, started our season in Black Swamp on Mondays. These are three of the four seniors. Jayden will hopefully be with us later. I know he's juggling basketball too, which is difficult. But, uh, we, they went three and two the first round. They have three more rounds Monday night at LCC, the twenty-fifth, uh, second, ninth of December. And then they'll compete at, uh, Wright State University, uh, late February, early March, the Bath Invite, which we did last year again, first time. That was actually the last event before COVID canceled everything, and then last year was the first year we brought it back, and then they'll also compete at WBL, which is the end of the season. So they're off to three and two starts, so, should compete fine, yeah.
Years ago, I helped begin the program at Eli Middle School, the middle school program thoroughly. I thought it was a, a good activity for kids to just share how, uh, how much they know. And how little I know, I think. But thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Jayden, much the same. So environment is our last item there, and that is always the last, uh, Wednesday in April around Earth Day. Jayden's taking the test. One, once. Yes, because the one year, we had fog, like literally fogged in. We called, they said, you can come if you want to come, you don't have to come, you know, and we, we went. Tucked over with, uh, Kena, and she said, do it, we, it was luckily when we drove out there, it was like, once we got past the middle ways on thirty, the lights opened up and there was no fog. Uh, last year, we were at Allen County, and this year, let me competing in Putnam County, so he, he didn't, uh, have to go very far for this year's, uh, taking the environment test, which is a good experience for those kids.
I absolutely, I, I don't know anything about it.
Well, environment has, uh, been going on for a long time, like seventies, eighties, that eighties is when it started. Um, and then basically, they, the, um, Ohio State Extension person saw me somewhere, and she begged me, literally begged me to take the team to the test, because Allen County has, has had zero people. So we, we tried to get ready for the test, do the best we can. Um, Fort Jennings has a class where they literally prepare for the class, the test, uh, on Fridays, they're either Friday or the school year. So it's gonna be hard to beat those guys, but we, we do that, and we're, we've been right in the middle almost all the years, and the kids that go have a very experience with it. So it's, it's basically a series of four tests. You can tell them a little bit about it if you wanted to, Jayden, about what you're taking.
Uh, so it was time to go outside on the, uh, OSU Lama campus, uh, answering questions about wildlife, both like the year, uh, aquatic wildlife too, uh, soil samples, just a lot of different things about the environment.
Well, thank you. Appreciate you being here. I want to thank all of you. Sharing the story with us and letting us get to know, know each of you a little bit better. Uh, as had been in our past practice, we don't keep you. We allow you to get out now if you want to before we begin our regular meeting. Again, thank you for coming in. Good seasons to those of you that stand up. Right up. I forgot. Wait, 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 wait.
Waiting.
Okay, there you go. Thanks for coming tonight. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Good luck. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for being. Thanks, girls. Okay, who's getting away?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item is board responses to previous communications. There are none. Um, then moving on to hearing of the public items on the agenda, blue cards, we have none. Um, so moving on to items to board, president administrator report, Mr. Brian Dusko.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for staying for the presentation, guys. Putting pressure on me, appreciate that. Okay, uh, we did get technology working here, so I will let you guys stare straight ahead, and if you're okay with it, I'll kind of stay here in the background and kind of explain what we have going on here. I'm just gonna kind of start with an overview of our, our report card from the high school standpoint for this, for last school year. Um, again, on a five-star rating, we, we were rated overall as a four-star. Uh, you can see the categories there for, for this report card. Achievement, progress, gap, closing, and graduation. We'll, we'll briefly go over each of those. Uh, we did, I did see something the other day where we are gonna have the early literacy and the college career readiness, uh, workforce and military readiness will be a part of next year's report card as well. They're, they're, they're dividing that up percentage-wise, so that'll be a little bit different, uh, moving forward here. In terms of the achievement piece, um, quite honestly, uh, very, very happy with where we were this year in our achievement piece. So in high school, we take six end-of-course exams that are listed there on the left-hand side. This is the first year since I've been in the high school, since we've done the, the end-of-course exams, whether it be as the assistant principal to principal, that we've hit five of those six in terms of the, or the, the proficient mark. So eighty percent is the target for all of our students to score on each of those tests, seven hundred or higher. Um, the state set that, that benchmark at eighty percent, and this is the first year that we've hit as many as we have. We've never hit the geometry before this year. We've, we've fallen just short in recent years in, in English language arts, and we've fluctuated in the others. Um, I actually think this is the first year that we've hit the algebra as well. You'll notice the algebra numbers test taken is, is, is low. If you guys can recall, we did make a curriculum change where we, when we inserted the pre-algebra, so those students that were in pre-algebra last year will take that end-of-course exam this year. So we're hoping to see the same amount of, uh, proficiency and growth in those students, giving them that extra year to prepare for the test. Um, but of those forty students that took it, obviously thirty-five passed, so we're very happy with that element. The, the graph on the right just gives you guys an idea of where we were twenty twenty to now in terms of the, the proficiency scores and how our students are performing. So we're definitely back on the incline, um, and, and performing well. Um, the red and the, in the, in the purple are students that score limited or basic, the, you know, the lower end of the scoring here. Um, the blue at the top are, are advanced plus students, so we're, we're actually getting, you know, some production on, on that end, um, in a positive light. So very pleased with the achievement part of our report card. Uh, we have these graphs. We, I think we do these every year, just to kind of give you guys an idea. Um, this is just a screenshot of where we've been, similar to the chart that we just showed you. Um, this is a county comparison, so we, we kind of look at our schools countywide and how we do, or how we are performing in comparison to them. Uh, we've highlighted this, green are our wins, red are our losses, so, uh, with the exception of our American history, um, we, we are performing comparatively well to other schools here in the county. Um, again, I throw this disclaimer in every year with our American history. A couple of years ago, we decided that we were gonna shift our history curriculum and put American history at, at a freshman-level course. Um, most schools in the area, and I believe most schools in the state probably still offer that course as a sophomore-level course. We decided to move it up to the freshman level to piggyback it off of the US American history up to eighteen seventy-seven in the middle school. So our students are likely testing a year ahead of where everybody else's students are. Um, and we'll get to that in a minute here when we talk about the progress piece, but overall, our students are performing very well in comparison to those in the county. Uh, this is our, just our WBL, so again, um, just a comparison of schools that we see and, and come across very often. And once again, um, it shows that we are performing very well, you know, in comparison to schools that are, I think right now, we're probably the smallest school in the league, um, versus the schools that are, that are much larger than us, so, um, and I, I can tell you, last year, uh, OG kind of took a clean slate into everything here. Um, so we closed the gap on that a little bit and, and took advantage of, uh, of some categories there with them across the league, so we're pleased with that. This is the one that tells maybe a truer picture of where we are in terms of our district. Uh, the state releases every year a twenty-school comparison, um, throughout the state of Ohio, to districts that are very similar to ours. And they take all these factors into consideration with demographics. factors into consideration with demographics, school population, a lot of different factors in there. So in comparison to schools that the state deems are most similar to Bath High School, you can see that our students are performing very, very well in those tested areas. So even better, that's even better than we did last year. I don't think we, I don't think we had 20 and zero in any category last year. So very, very proud of our students, very proud of our staff for the efforts that they put forth in making the improvements in those areas. The progress component, this is, this is the one that's hit us on the report card for a couple of years now. We're scoring a two star here. And essentially what this is calculating is growth, student growth. Are we compared to the expected growth of the state? Mr. SS and I, we sat in on a meeting with the state representative, a report card meeting a couple of weeks ago, just trying to figure out and just learn a little bit more about this aspect of the report card. The top graph there is our data from last year. The bottom one there is from this year. So you can see the red indicates that we're falling short of these growth expectations. So in these two categories, we've actually improved. We did take a step back in geometry this year. Our test scores were a little bit lower than they were the previous year. Biology, it's kind of an enigma to me. I'm not really sure. We did show pretty significant growth in that aspect. And when we asked in that, in that meeting about the report card and could this be in any way connected to our students, especially with American history, testing a grade level sooner than most? The representative said, yeah, that could have something to do with that as well. But our American government students in that test, they're performing way above the expected growth for the state level. One thing that we did learn in this that I was unaware of was that from the high school standpoint in those biology, history, and government tests, I think most were under the assumption that we were calculating the, these projected scores that students are supposed to have based on a previous test somewhere. And what they told us is that every state test that our students take in the district, from the first one in whatever grade level, third grade up, that's the factor that goes into where they then calculate this number that students are supposed to score. So what we've discovered is, I mean, we have some, some room for improvement, especially maybe on the, on the lower end of our scale and our, maybe bottom 15 or 20% of academic students. But we've also learned that, you know, our students that are at the, at the higher end, they're performing so well that at times, there's not a whole lot of room for them to expand and grow. And so we're gonna keep working on that as well. But overall, again, we're gonna continue to look at how we can improve in these areas. And we've done some things and purchased some, some other assistance in terms of programs for some of our students to get reinforcement in areas of need. So the gap closing, again, it's kind of confusing, but it measures language arts and math, subgroups of students. The attendance piece is a factor in this as well with the chronic absenteeism. I didn't put last, last year's of the 22 and 23 number up there, but that number was at 19, a little bit over 19% chronic absenteeism. So we have reduced that number over, over the past school year as we're continuing to try to encourage and keep kids actively engaged here at Bath High School. Graduation rate, this was another one that we discussed. Again, this cohort of students in these two classes would have been the class of 22 and 23. So our four year graduation rate from the class of 23 was almost 93%. The five year graduation rate for the class of 22 was 97.5. So total, that put us in the four star category. And we're gonna continue to work with that. We, I'll just be honest, I mean, we were, from the meeting that we had the other day, we are anticipated to maybe drop a star here, looking at next year's data from last year's graduating class. So we are gonna get on the buzzer here with those students that, that didn't graduate last year and try to get them to come back and finish to, to maybe get them in that five year count. So this is a battle that we're gonna continue to, to work on and encourage students to figure out a way to finish what they've started because a lot of those students are very, very close. We've had multiple students in recent years that have walked out, you know, with two or three credits left that they were on track to gain. But once they've turned 18 years old, they've just kind of decided that they've, they've wanted to move on from things. So we're gonna keep working on that aspect as well. Okay, let's get into some of the fun stuff here. So with our CTE grant, we are, are close to completing what I would consider phase one, which was transforming a couple spaces in our, in our high school. The first space that we really focused on was our live, or our study hall area. So for those that can go back and envision before this photo, this was our big room in the middle of the building with about 80 to 100 wooden desks in there that students went in for study hall every day. So over the summer, we changed the space, new flooring, new lighting, new paint. And, and as a result of that, we partnered with Paxton Patterson to put a 28 module career lab in that space. So in that lab, we have what we consider 22 level one exploratory modules. This class is for, right now, we have our freshmen and sophomores rotating through it on a semester basis. Part of the grant, we tried to focus on the in-demand jobs and careers in our area. A heavy emphasis on manufacturing, robotics, and healthcare. But we did, we did, we were able to incorporate some other areas as well. We also have what they considered level two, which was basically health science related. So we have a whole section in there that's just kind of defined for students that might be interested in, in the healthcare field. And so as you guys will see, I've just put, I won't go into a lot of detail here, but just kind of showing you how this is set up in, in that space. So the idea behind the career lab was not only to expose students to different careers. These students are rotating in that lab on 10 or 12 day rotations in each of their modules. A lot of times, they're working with a partner. And at the end of that 10 or 12th day, then they're moving on to the next one. And the concept was, again, not only exploratory learning, but was to get them hands on and just get them involved in, in learning with hands on activities. I can tell you, the first rotation, the first two week rotation that we did, we did not open up the culinary arts section yet. We weren't ready for that. And this seems to be one of the most popular ones with students. They like to cook. They've got the hallways smelling. There's pancakes going on. There's all kinds of different things that they, that they have going on down there when they're cooking. So it's been really neat. Every time that we walk by, those students are engaged. Mr. Gomez and Mr. Bowley are doing a great job with them. They're learning as we're going along here. We're gonna make some modifications as we move forward with, with what we're doing here. But so far, I think the, the response from our students and just the visual of walking into that space and seeing those kids in there has certainly been a positive addition to our building. So we just kind of go through here. And again, this is just a lot of different, a lot of different things. 28 different modules for those students in the course of two years to get exposed to. And then go through. This one's kind of neat, the sports medicine one. Students are actually, I know when, when I was in school, we actually had an athletic training class where we learned how to tape and do those things. Well, those kids are getting an abbreviated version of that in that module. So you'll walk in on any given day and students are learning how to tape wrists and tape ankles. They are putting students on this, on this board here with that football helmet. They undo the face masks as if there was a spinal cord injury and they, they learn how to secure the head and, and get them out of that space. So this is one of our EMT and nursing modules where they are, you know, essentially learning, drawing blood, and trying to, trying to do different EMT and medical procedures. There's a little bit of a CPR, as you can see the dummy over there, introduction in that module as well. So that's, that module, that career lab was our, our main focus, was the first thing that we did with those funds. The second thing that we did, and I guess in alignment with that was, in, in Mr. Gomez's paw printer in his class, in the back of his class, we created a digital media studio for our paw print. So again, this used to be an old, an old home economics room that had old wooden cabinets back there that were storage. We removed those over the summer. We built that, or we didn't, they did, built this glass in studio for our students to be able to film and produce for our paw print newscast. With the, with the grant, we were able to purchase a new broadcast desk, obviously all the productions going on in here with our students, able to purchase new technology, new camera equipment for those as well, new iPads. And then this is kind of neat. We've got, we have a couple of students that have kind of figured this out already where they're, we have a separate room in there where they have some editing equipment and they're able to dim the lights and, and really make it a productive experience for them. So that room, we still have some things to add to it, but the budget and the expenses from the grant are almost exhausted for that, that phase of the, of the grant. The next phase that we're going into now is gonna be our library. So we are working with a company called Invention Land. And the week of December the 9th, they are scheduled to come in and flip our library space into what we want to, we're gonna call it an innovation lab. The idea behind it is really a maker space or mini maker space area. Again, another area where students can get hands on with learning and equipment. So again, just from the visual standpoint, those of you that can see what our library currently looks like, the entrance, again, a 1963 version of a high school library that a lot of places have done what we are about to do with it. So coming soon then, with some graphics and design are gonna be a brand new space with brand new furniture. The one thing that we didn't do, we didn't remove this. We're just gonna update the current desk that's in there. But all new tables. The concept behind this is a collaboration space, somewhere for students to be able to go and work collaboratively on different things. It could be students from study hall. Part of the grant does have us trying to incorporate how classroom teachers can actually utilize the space as well within their own, within their own classworks, or their own classes, I mean. These are robotics tables. So in the, in the career lab next door, in the study hall, students are working with robotics. So our idea is that we're gonna purchase more, more robotics equipment so that our students can learn how to program those. And these grid tables will allow students to, to work on the programming piece and get a little more in depth than what we do in the careers class next door. Again, seating in here, there's, there's total seating for probably 55 or 60 people in that space. One of the things that we are gonna add into that space is an esports section that's, has been a new and upcoming thing. So in the very back corner of our library space, when we go in, we are gonna put some, some technology back there for the capability of esports, new paneling, new TV monitors. These computers will be esports accessible, but they'll also serve as other, other optional technology for students to do some other things with. So we're excited about that. The big piece with Invention Land is the flipping the furniture. Some of the equipment that we're actually looking to put in there, this is not everything, but, but again, we're looking to advance and enhance what we've done in our career space next door. So 3D printers and crickets, some laser engravers, some embroidery machines. You guys, I don't have to read the whole list to you. But again, things where our students can go in and really get hands on with some different forms of technology in terms of innovation and maker space ideas. Our next significant purchase that's coming, this was in the grant, this is an anatomage table. And I, I'll just see if I can do this really quickly for you here. Uh, we're not gonna have volume. Okay, that's okay. I'm talking too long anyway. The anatom, uh oh. The anatomage table is gonna be used for our science department. And did I lose my? There we go. If you've never seen those before, those anatomage tables are 3D tables that have actual, they, they are formed from actual cadavers. And it gives our students an enhanced 3D experience with our anatomy and physiology. The ones that we're gonna purchase are actually capable of allowing us to use it for other sciences. So we'll be able to use it for chemistry, physics, biology, and our physical or earth science classes that we have. So we're excited about this. Mr. Blevins has been waiting patiently for this. He's got experience with this through the Rhodes mobile lab that he's used. And we're looking to purchase this here within, within the next months, the next couple of months to get this up and running for our students in the second semester of the school year. Briefly, I just want to touch on CCP. One of the things that we're considering at the high school is, or maybe some changes to our current CCP policy. We rolled this out to students when we met with them earlier in the year. Oftentimes, people ask us, what do we, what do we have to offer on campus for CCP? And we, we have currently, among all these subject areas over here, we offer close to 15 to 16 current CCP courses that our teachers are teaching on, are capable of teaching on campus. We are looking at the possibility of adding a few more. I know that next year, we will have the capability of adding calculus back as a CCP course. There will be another addition of a language or an English literature course. So we actually have four in that realm. Not listed on there that we've had in our, in our course catalog before are some, are some marketing classes, some business classes that Mr. Bowley is capable of teaching. So we have plenty to offer for our students. The, the big thing that we're looking at doing is the potential of, of implementing something where we want our students to be on campus a little bit more than they currently are. Our current CCP procedures, students are in and out. They're in and out, in and out, in and out. And the idea is that we would like for them to be on campus for, you know, the better part of half of a school day. Other schools in the area have done this. The idea is not to punish the kids. The idea is, as you guys can see, our kids are coming up and, and telling you all the good things that they're doing. We want our kids on our campus. I, I would love to have them stick around and continue to have the positive impact on our culture that they, that they have, and maybe have that on a bigger scale with them being on campus and present more often. A lot of the things that we do gravitate around the middle of our day and our wildcat time and lunch period. So the idea is that, you know, through one of these examples and one of these modules that we've kind of laid it out to the kids, if you're taking online courses, you can do that. But we're thinking about maybe, if you're integrating it and you're a mixed bag of maybe having you stand on campus to take those courses either in a study hall, the snack bar setting, the lab, wherever you might be able to do that so that we can see you, so that we can communicate with you, so that we can talk to you, so that you can continue to make those positive impacts on others in our building. It's just an idea at this point. We haven't implemented anything. We've asked our staff for some feedback about this. You know, if we ask our students, probably think our students are, we kind of know what their answer is gonna be. They like the current model, the freedom to do what they're, they're doing. I know that some other districts and how they're doing their CCP model, they've pretty much laid it out there that if you are a full time, what the colleges consider a full time student of 12 credit hours or more, then you can, you can be released and be free and be off campus the entire time. So we're still in discussions about this, still looking for some feedback. But this is something that we're, that we're looking at the possibility of, of implementing as soon as next year for our high school students. Cat internships, again, just a quick update on this. So our senior internship program, as it stands, we currently have, I believe there were 17 on there between first and second semester placements. And you guys can see kind of the different, the different areas that those students are out in, in the field in, and then the different places that have accepted them and are taking them. So one of the things that we did tell students in that meeting about the CCP was, if you, you know, one of your, one of your options to get off campus, if that's what your goal is, is to, is to enroll in our, or show some interest in our cat program. So I know that Mr. Dakin has been talking to those juniors. And in those preliminary discussions, he's had about 30 or 35 of those juniors that have expressed interest in taking part in cat next year. So getting those kids out and getting them hands on and, and work experience in the field as part of this program. And that's it. I want to wish you guys all a happy, very happy Thanksgiving and Buckeyes have a couple of big weeks coming up. So go Bucks.
Thank you, Brian.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Dusko? Anybody in the audience? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. What kind of circle?
Those are all, those are all day long. That labs, almost every period. All right, thank you. I'll let you know. Next time I'll, next time they fire him up, I'll leave you.
Okay, moving on to special recognition, Mr. Kennedy.
I had one email sent to me from the elementary. I was not gonna read 264 students' names. I was not going to read two hundred and sixty-four students' names off the perfect attendance, but two hundred and sixty-four students at Bath Elementary.
Moving on to items from the superintendent.
Lost my paper. So I have to do it from my very short memory. Uh, I am pleased tonight that that is part of our agenda, we were hiring a. School resource officer, which I believe is the first in the history of the school of that, and for those of you who know me, yeah, there it is. You know, I've been on this mission since I started here. Because I think it's a significant part of creating a safer environment for our students and staff. So we'll move down into the agenda, but I wanted to tell you a little bit about the gentleman that we're going to hire tonight. He uh, has twenty-five years approximately uh as an Allen County Sheriff's Deputy. He was in the uniform division from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and six. A canine handler from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and six. That was one of the first questions I asked him, can you get me a dog? We're working on that one. From nineteen ninety-six to twenty thirteen, he was on the SWAT team. Part of the detective bureau from two thousand and four to two thousand and eight, where among other things responded to major crimes and preserved the scene to avoid evidence contamination. Part of, he was a uniformed division sergeant from two thousand and eight to two thousand and fourteen. Part of his responsibilities were to assist in the daily management of ten uniform deputies and six dispatchers assigned to the shift. And then uh, from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and eighteen, he was commander of the West Central Ohio Crime Force Task Force. And so he has an extensive background in law enforcement and uh, will be pleased to have him on staff. Kevin, would you stand for us, please, this is Kevin Litsi. Again, we appreciate you being here with us and look forward to. Just what he brings to the table as we try to do everything we can to improve upon the safety of our staff and students, thank you. PI projects, that's another paper I lost, but I quickly counted some notes, so. It's not in here. I'm sorry, uh, we did start the renovations to our high school and middle school entrances on Monday. A few glitches trying to get things moved around, uh, our main doors are going to. Well, our entrance doors during this project will now be door number two in each facility. So you'll come in through those doors, you try to come in through number one down here, you'll just be a wooden wall, probably the same thing at the high school eventually. Uh, we haven't quite gotten that far yet.
Not yet, they've got the temporary wall up to the trophy case to let students continue to walk in, but as soon as those buzzers get shifted, they're going to box everything else in and get ready to go, so.
Right, so that that project's underway, uh, we're very pleased with that. Uh, over Thanksgiving, we will caulk the side windows in the high school second floor. Where we had the safety film put on, that's a, that's like a two-step process, you have to do one, wait two or three months and then do the other part of the process, so. So that will be done. In December, we've talked about before, uh, hanging room signs out in the corridor so that they can be read from the end of the hall. Rather than, you know how it was, if you think back, if you've been out of the school for a while. The number was always flat on the door and you had to be in front of it to see what it was, so now you'll be able to stand at the end of the hallway and see every room down through there. Which will aid our first responders in in identifying areas that that they might be needed in. Um, the numbers for the outside, we'll do in the spring where we'll have numbers either on the windows or right above the windows. With our, with the film on our windows, that creates additional problems for us, so we're trying to figure out the best way to get those numbers on the outside. So again, the first responders can identify the areas where they need to be. Well. Brian talked about invention land in his building, uh, the middle school will also remodel this facility. Into its own version of invention land, it'll be somewhat different than this one, uh, that equipment has not arrived yet. One of the things in looking at, you know, as responding to a parent one day about what we do to improve on the safety here. And I got to thinking, when you, when I'm down at the elementary, I can see through those windows. More so that I can see through the one, in my office, it looks cloudy every day because the film at the window makes it dark. So I'm thinking, we have, I, you know, I don't remember that down at the elementary, so. I asked the question and I found out that when that glass was put in, it's not, it wasn't put in with safety film. So now we're looking at a project and it's it's got a hefty price tag to it, but I think it's something else that we'll want to strongly consider doing. Maybe even have a resolution for it at next month's board meeting to start putting the safety film on the glass at the elementary on the windows and doors. Again, doing everything we can to improve on the safety and security of our staff and students. That completes my.
Yep. Moving on to the superintendent's consent agenda.
Okay, so all of these items under uh, number nine here are for this school year twenty-four, twenty-five, so I'm not going to read that with everyone else. Letter A, recommendation for employment slash resignation, we have number one. A certified supplemental resignation of Frankie Russell for basketball boys, eighth grade assistant. Uh, we have a certified stipend payment. Approving paying teachers per the attached list, the qualifying stipend is defined by the Department of Education workforce. For completing the science of reading and professional development course. C, certified substitutes, certified substitutes approved by the Allen County Educational Service Center. Item two, classified staff. A, classified leave of absence, Tammy Barton Wright, Tammy Barton Reichardt, bus driver and monitor beginning November twenty-ninth through January thirteenth. B, classified administrative employment, Kevin Litsi, school resource officer, three-year contract effective November twentieth, twenty twenty-four. We're putting to work first day tomorrow, right away. Through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Classified employment, Desiree Morrell, food service, one-year limited contract. Uh, year one, six and a half hours a day, effective November eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Classified substitute employment, substitute teachers aides and library aides approved by the Allen County Educational Service Center Superintendent. Substitute custodians approved, nineteen fifty-one per hour, Carissa Mayer. Substitute monitor approved, sixteen oh eight per hour, Randy Harrod Gonzalez. Outside employment correction, Robert Zach Smith, football assistant correction to level one, twelve percent. Outside employment, Troy Corkey, basketball boys assistant eight, level two, ten percent. Scott Miller, basketball boys assistant nine, level two, eleven percent. Mackenzie Wilson, basketball girls assistant nine, level zero, nine percent. Volunteer coaches, this list is included for liability insurance purposes, all volunteer coaches are contingent. On proper certification and paperwork required by the Ohio Department of Education for volunteer coaches. James Marcel, wrestling middle school volunteer, Robert Zach Smith, baseball boys eight, volunteer.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, okay. Move by Mrs. Ernest, second by Mr. Kennedy, any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Lighty?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest?
Yes.
Okay, item ten, superintendent's consent addendum. A, represent, recommendation for employment slash resignation. Uh, number one, classified staff, classified resignation. Nicole Kennedy, food service, effective November sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second. Move by Mr. White, seconded by Mrs. Ernest, any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Lighty?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Moving on to treasurer's report, five-year forecast.
I told Mr. Ess, this is kind of a fun time of year, we need to do the forecast, look at a bunch of stuff. I said we will be out of here no later than ten thirty. As we look at kind of the October thirty-one data, um, you know, when we look at the general fund, kind of where we're at in. July one through October thirty-first, just to give you a feel for that activity for, you know, as we start the the new fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, revenues at seven point eight million, expenses seven point three, uh, net gain of five hundred twenty-five thousand, October balance, we're we're just over seventeen million. Again, kind of that breakdown, uh, you can get a feel for the real estate taxes, just over three million, you can see the state aid, I'm almost, almost at three million. Uh, again, with that total of seven, eight, on the expense side, again, the big three is going to be personnel, retirement, purchase service. Uh, again, as I've got that seven point three million in expenses as of July one through ten thirty-one. Again, just kind of that visual on the revenue side, um, again, the green being the real estate, uh, blue being the the state aid. Get, again, those two big pieces of our our revenue streams from the general fund, um, again, just that visual. Same thing on the expense side, you know, salaries, you know, were fifty percent basically. Uh, you know, benefits and purchase service again, going to be the next two main pieces of what what we're doing, uh, again, July through October. Um, that cash, that cash history, again, just, you know, where we've been October thirty-one for the, you know, really look at the last five years. Um, you know, a little bit dropped from where we were last year at this time, seventeen seventeen million to seventeen three. As far as, uh, you know, you look at twenty-two, we're sixteen, seven, you can see on down to twenty-twenty. Um, you know, again, a very strong cash position, um, and and again, we're going to talk about some of the repairs that are underway. That have happened and will happen, uh, again, and kind of the impact of those those repair type things. Again, just that ebb and flow of that kind of the cash, um, again, we get that tax settlement August and February and we kind of spend it down. Um, again, just kind of a feel for the the flow of the the cash as it as it comes in and as we spend it. Uh, investments, um, again, investment rate, the rate of investment's still pretty high. Um, Star Ohio and SJS are both still right, you know, right around five percent. Um, so again, the interest income is in a a strong spot. Um, again, we've kind of been in a in a good place there. Um, food service, um, again, as we kind of gets ramped up for the the school year. Uh, the federal revenue of over sixty thousand, local revenue of over ninety-five thousand revenue. Uh, expenses, again, they've got that serving line that happened, you know, so for right now, their loss is at two hundred and forty-nine thousand, but a hundred and thirty-eight thousand would have been the serving line they installed. Um, again, their October thirty-one balance, I'm looking at seven hundred and thirty-four thousand with the food service. Uh, again, athletics, uh, you know, uh, again, football, as we kind of wrap up a very good football season. Um, revenue's over thirty-five thousand, total revenue, I'm at ninety-six, uh, expenses eighty-eight thousand. You know, so just in that athletic fund, right now, a gain of eighty-two hundred, ending balance of ninety thousand, four twenty-eight, just in the athletic fund. Uh, other general fund expenses to date, hundred twenty-five thousand, just to give you a feel for where that that breakdown is. Um, I left this slide on, because we talked about this last month, the high constitution, since I know Mr. White ran into Bill Phyllis at Capitol Conference about the uh. His activity with vouchers and again, just that that group's efforts to remind folks of what's in the high constitution as it relates to. Um, you know, tax dollars going to the private schools and to the level it's it's happening, so. I'm glad to cut up with Phil a little bit and talk about that or talk to Bill about that, uh, their efforts and I think their efforts will continue. Um, the PI piece, um, you know, as as I'm putting the forecast stuff together, there's a lot of moving parts to it. Um, I thought it was a good time to kind of reflect on, you know, the. You know, I think the board's had a pretty good list of repair items and, you know, when you got two, two facilities with the age it is, the age they are and and, you know, where that's, where that's at and. Sometimes you need to, you know, fix the roof and fix the asphalt and that, those, those items need to be addressed. Um, you know, it's a, a lot to the campus, a lot to the physical part of what we do. Um, and so this is just kind of a feel for what those PI, those repair items, you know, what have we spent over time? You know, going back to twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, you're nine hundred sixty-one thousand, twenty-two, twenty-three, four hundred eighty-four thousand. And again, these are just dollars coming out of the PI fund, the permanent improvement fund. So again, those those dollars for really repairs and assets that are going to last over five years. Um, twenty-three, twenty-four, but over four hundred thousand, and then so to start twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, you know, we're over a million and again, part of that's going to be probably the, you know, the up, the upgrade to the the parking around the facility, which. I think really turned out to be a, probably a very much needed in a project that was done well. Um, yeah, there's some parts that, you know, I was trying to get when I looked at the valuation of, you know, all the properties in the district. One of the pieces I was kind of hoping to get my hands on, but I could not, is, you know, what the valuation is going to be for one-one-twenty-five. Um, when auditor does some updates, that that's probably going to change this go around, and I'm curious to know what that. That three hundred and thirty-three thou, or uh, that number's going to change, three hundred and thirty-three million is going to change. But again, what's the value, what's the history of the property value? Um, for for Bath local schools, going back to one-one-twenty-one, we're two hundred and eighty-one million. And again, to date, I'm at three hundred and thirty-three million, but I feel like that the number's going to bump. Um, you know, there's probably some, again, there's going to be some debate at the, with the legislators on. Uh, some of those increases on those valuations driving up some taxes. You know, is there a way, and one of the speakers I listened to at Capitol Conference, Howard Fleer, talked about. You know, is there a way to give some tax breaks to probably those at a certain age level? You know, once they hit a certain age level, would there be some tax breaks or credits that you could give? Knowing that that property value is probably going to bump up, that I should know that data soon, where that number's at, and I'm curious to see what it looks like. Um, the other piece on, when we talk about looking at the forecast, looking ahead. Um, you know, the one component is, you know, what's enrollment doing? You know, and I think that's a, you know, that's going to drive a lot of things. You go back to twenty-one, twenty-two, um, and again, you start, you're going back to COVID, what was that number, county-wide, the number's probably down over time. Uh, you know, but for Bath local schools, you're going from seventeen twenty to currently, um, you know, fifteen sixty-seven. Uh, so again, as as we have some of our administrative meetings and discussions, you know, trying to keep one eye on that, where that enrollment number's at, because like I said. It's going to drive some of the programming, it's going to drive some of the class sizes, it's going to drive, you know, some of the staffing issues, items. Um, state percent, you know, again, this number's always kind of cur, interesting to look at because in the formula. Some of the, some of the ways the formula is still put together, you know, the formula is looking at property values, it's looking at income levels of the people in the in the district. So, and it's probably also going to look at enrollment to some level. But again, over time, you're going to see that that state aid percent, what's the state share percentage? Um, you know, it's gone from fifty percent in twenty-one, twenty-two. And then it's going to, for twenty-four, twenty-five, it's it's showing at forty-six point nine percent, dropping a little bit. Again, if our valuation goes up, the state share is going to, it's going to drop. So we're still playing that game a little bit on, you know, from from where I sit, it's always frustrating that. If the tax values go up, taxpayers pay more, you know, they're not happy necessarily, state revenue goes down, I'm not happy. Because, you know, I, so it is, it's still that juggling act of. You know, there's that expectation that there's going to be a local share. And again, I'm going to keep an eye on that valuation of the properties here and where it's going. Um, I also posed a question about, you know, what, the impact of what Dana's doing on our, that that property value, so. I hope to know more, if not next meeting in January for sure. Um. Yeah, state aid, as we get into the forecast, again, I really focus on the three years of history and then kind of the next two years. Because there's, there's, there's a. of history, and then kind of the next two years, because there's, there's a lot of parts I don't know. And even on the state aid, you know, I go back in time, I'm at six eight, six point eight million. You know, we finished up June thirty, twenty-four, I'm at like seven point seven, you know, it's still going to be relatively flat until I know a little more data. You know, again, that state aid's going to be impacted by enrollment, it's going to be impacted by our valuation moving forward, and then the next budget cycle, so there's some variables there I don't know just yet. Property tax, you know, again, I think this number's going to change, you look at the three years' history, six-nine, seven-two, seven-three, those are in the books. For twenty-five, I need to see the valuation to give you a better number, which when we update in May, I'll have a clearer picture of where that's going out in time. But again, you can see the history, part of it is those three years, you know, like I said, you go from six point nine million up to seven point three, it gives you a feel for what is that growth. Now, let's flip on, look on the expense side of things, when we look at salaries, again, three years in history, nine-two, nine-seven, ten-two, ten-six, eleven-one for twenty-five. You know, so again, basically going from nine-two to almost eleven-two over that timeframe. And again, some of the programs we've added, you know, I think, you know, we have added, you know, a couple different things, and I think some of those student services, some of those wellness services, you know, intervention specialist, special ed, special ed person, I think those are, you've added some things that are very needed in kind of today's educational world. So again, I think the part I'll track again with enrollment, tracking the staff, like I said, I'll have, you know, a little better data, especially when we get to May, about where a couple of things are at. On the benefit side, you know, this year, we talked about starting in January one, the medical insurance took a ten percent bump. You know, so again, as we track this, and, you know, going from three point one million to three-three to three-six, you know, putting a ten percent on, ten percent on just the medical piece, you know, it's interesting going from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-nine, our benefits could jump two million. You know, so again, some of those, an eye on the medical piece, and again, I think the COGS done a nice job of trying to slow down some of the cost, but inflation happens there, and you see it daily when you go to the doctor and some of the things that have to happen. Cash balance, again, kind of tracking, again, I look at the last three years, fifteen-two, fifteen-seven, sixteen-five, you know, I think with some of the repair projects, you know, projecting fifteen-five-ish to finish this, this school year, like I said, there's some pieces there, we'll update in May, especially when I get the tax valuation, I've got to see that. And again, some of those repair projects, they'll continue into this year, you know, there's some, basically, there's some good things going on, and again, keep the, you know, the physical plant in good working order. Capitol Conference, you know, there's, there were some good things there, I know a couple of sessions, a couple of sessions I went to, I know Howard Fleeter's an economist, always good to listen to his numbers, it's always good to listen to other schools talk and present about what they're doing, how they're doing it, it's kind of refreshing just to, just to, you know, hear some of those ideas of what's out there, and I think, you know, gosh, you've got a lot of students doing some great things here, and I think, you know, maybe at some point, you know, they could be part of that student achievement fair, because I think there's some good things happening. That's all I've got.
Okay, do we have any questions for Mr. Parker? Do any of the audience have any questions about anything? Okay. So a motion to approve the five-year forecast? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Ernest, seconded by Mr. Lighty, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lighty.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Oh, and I do have an action item to dispose the high jump mats, coming from the athletic department, that I think they've got some mats that are in disrepair.
Do we have a motion to dispose?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Lighty, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Lighty.
Yes.
Treasurer's consent agenda.
Again, the bulk of, kind of what I presented there as far as the, you know, the financial statuses of October the first.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ernest, seconded by Mr. White, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Lighty.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
Item thirteen, section A, organizational slash regular meeting, discuss the date for the twenty twenty-five organizational meeting. Date for discussion is Monday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, time six P M.
Okay, so would we be doing the organizational first and then the regular meeting?
Timically, yeah.
Okay. So say that the organizational's at six and then regular's at six thirty?
Or we'll follow.
Just follow up with it, okay. Do we have a?
Do you have a preference on that, Joel?
Yeah, I think you have to say we need to follow or?
Yeah.
Or come on, I mean, I guess if we want to set a timer, we'll probably say six thirty, I guess.
Okay. It's two separate. Okay. Okay, so organizational at six, and then the regular January board meeting at six thirty. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kennedy, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ernest. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Lighty.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Item B, indoor track and field resolution, whereas Bath High School students desire to participate in the state-level indoor track and field meet, and whereas indoor track and field is not recognized by the Ohio High School Athletic Association and not sponsored by Bath High School, and whereas the Bath varsity and assistant varsity track coaches have volunteered to supervise this indoor track and field club sport activity, and whereas there will be no costs to the Bath Local School District for student participation in the state-level indoor track and field meet, therefore, the Bath Local School District officially recognizes indoor track and field as a club sport for the twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year for the purpose of enabling qualifying Bath High School students to participate in the state indoor track and field.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Lighty, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Lighty.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Item C, kindergarten screening, approved request for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six kindergarten screening to be held on May twenty-seventh and May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, thereby making current kindergarten students' last day of school, May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Ernest, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lighty.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Item D, school resource officer job description, approved attached job description for the school resource officer.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Approved by Mr. White, seconded by Mrs. Ernest, any discussion?
Yeah, just like to comment, I mean, we have talked about this for about two years, and it has been our intention to attempt to get at least two resource officers, unfortunately, that's the way of the world now, we wish we didn't have to do that, but it's the right thing to do. The law enforcement shortage has really been a challenge to everybody, and I think Mr. S was continuing to pursue pathways of finally getting one, and perhaps some others showing interest, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. S.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Lighty.
Yes.
Item E, S E R S pickup plan resolution, adopt a new school employees' retirement system, S E R S pickup plan to be effective November twenty twenty-four, this plan will pay the employee's share of S E R S, and this fringe benefit will be included in their compensation. The plan includes the school resource officer, employees in the covered group cannot opt out of the pickup plan.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lighty, seconded by Mr. White, any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Lighty.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Item F, OFCC resolution, resolution of intent to participate in the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission expedited local partnership program, whereas the Board of Education of the Bath Local School District, Allen County, Ohio, met regular session on November nineteenth, twenty-two and four, and adopted the following resolution, and whereas the school district intends to participate in the expedited local partnership program as outlined in Sunville two seventy-two, and whereas the school district is planning to expend local resources to achieve a separate and distinct part of the overall master facilities plan that the school district's facilities need, as prepared in conjunction with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, that it is either new construction or major repairs, and whereas the school district's board intends to move forward with a valid issue or apply other local resources in November twenty twenty-five, and acknowledges this date may not be sooner than twelve months following the date of this resolution, unless the district has a master's facility plan developed under another OFCC program. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Bath Local School District, Allen County, Ohio, that the school district declares its intention to participate in the expedited local partnership program.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ernest, seconded by Mr. Lighty, any discussion?
Yeah, just to clarify, we've had lots of conversations about buildings, so the last resolution we passed was to get this ALP process running, which is a necessary foundation of figuring out what it costs to build, whether it's a separate middle school and a separate high school, or ultimately what's called the CFAP program, which is a combined building. So knowing that our timeline for CFAP is at least fifteen years, because we're not even on the list yet, and knowing that we want to pursue the possibility of entertaining, carefully, you hear what I say, entertaining, building, a building under the ALP program sooner than that, that's something that Mike has a community action team looking at the master plan, but this is the next step in that process, saying we want to continue down that route. Do not leave here tonight, do not here on the street, that the board tonight authorized building a new building, that is not what this is, this is simply a continuation of the planning process. Thank you.
Awesome, thanks, Phil. Roll call.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Lighty.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
G, van drivers, approval of certi, certified van drivers for liability purposes, Jeremy Chandler.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Lighty, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Lighty.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Item H, impractical to transport, due to the small number of students attending the Allen County Educational Service Center, Special Education Units, and the Center for Autism and Dyslexia, Bath School Board declares it impractical to transport by conventional school bus. Transportation will be offered through either black and white cab company, R T A contract with parents slash legal guardian at a rate of three dollars per day. Students to be approved for transportation services are included in the attached list.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Ernest, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kennedy, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lighty.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Item I, chaperones, volunteers, guest speakers, this list is included for liability insurance purposes, all volunteer chaperones and guest speakers have met the necessary requirements.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ernest, seconded by Mr. Lighty, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Lighty.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the report administrators.
The food service and transportation report that's placed on the counter there, it's back to back, so they're just one sheet of paper, that will have both those reports on it.
Thank you, Mike. Moving on to hearing of the public, we have one blue card, Mr. Jim Thorben.
I'm going to forego that in respect to the school, I'll, I'll request a meeting with the board.
Okay.
And go over that.
I'm going to hold you in. So putting that on hold, any items from individual board members?
I have one, the Athletic Committee meeting, tentatively is scheduled for December the third at four thirty. Correct.
Okay, Mike, and we do not have a need for executive session, so I guess we will move on to, let's see there. Oh, adjournment. Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ernest, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Ernest.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Lighty.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Next regular board meeting's Tuesday, December seventeenth at seven P M, and we'll be in contract, or we'll be under construction. They may be under construction, so.
There'll be arrows.
We'll let you know. Thank you, everybody.
Rhetorical question.